Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
RoKaw, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communication and reports, any from the board? None, but I do have one, just in case. If there's anyone here tonight for the Snowflake Award, that has been changed to January 22nd, so if you did not get your notification, I'm sorry. It was scheduled for tonight by the Beautification Commission. Unfortunately, they did not give us enough notice to put it on the agenda, so it's the 22nd. Just wanted to let you know if there is somebody here for tonight. Okay, adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
RoKaw.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Public participation, this is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, your address, and that you adhere to the three-minute rule that we have. If there's anybody here for the CBDG hearing, that's going to be separate, so I just wanted to let you know.
Hi, my name is John Emerson, and I live at 190 Clinton River Court, and with the Mount Clemens Public Library, I'm presenting a program in February the 5th, 2019, on Africans in America, in and before my lifetime. My lifetime started August 6, 1939, until today, and the program's gonna be at the Mount Clemens Public Library, February 5th, at 7:00 PM. And it, two important parts to this is the one lynching in Mount Clemens, and the one lynching in Mississippi. And I got newspaper articles, and the Macomb leader from one, and the Macomb Daily from the other one.
Okay, sounds interesting. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Stahl, I live at 89 Grove Park. I am here on behalf of myself and other residents on the street where I live, including the gentleman that came with me, Mark, he's on 90 Grove Park. We have had a bit of a problem on our street for quite some time, and Barbara was in your office about four months ago about the dogs. We have got a family that has two, and now has acquired a third pit bull. We don't have a problem with pit bulls, but these dogs are at large all the time. The police have been there at least 20 times, nothing has been done. One time, the police told, the dispatch told Mark, "Go back inside your house," when they had a problem. So we don't think that we should have to hide in our houses from these dogs. Animal Control won't respond, they didn't respond to our problem today. In the past, the only thing they ever said is if the dogs are back in the house, by the time we get there, we can't do anything about it. Yesterday, the third dog that they just acquired attacked Mark's service dog. We, I have a toddler, Sonny, your sister is Vanessa, she has Tristan over there, she's watching. You see, I have a toddler, we have little dogs, we can't be afraid in our own street. So I'm coming to you to say, what can we do? The police haven't really done anything, like I said, they've been there at least 20 times, and if you put up the address, I'm sure you can get record of how many times they've been there. So I'm coming to you to say, what do we do? I'm not gonna live in my own neighborhood afraid of these dogs, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, my name is John McCanns-
Mike.
Good afternoon, my name is John McCanns, I live at 550 Clinton River Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan. Right, the River Acres Community Group would like some of their community development block grant to be used to purchase five rows of the bleachers seat. Well, let's see, that will cost approximately $2,127 to be located by the basketball court or the softball diamond. May I step forward and give you this?
Sure may.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. First of all, I'd like to wish the city, the city commissioners, and this whole city a blessed and a happy new year. I live on Bain Street, and I've been before this commission, before talking about the post office parking. It used to be as high as 65 cars parked down Bain, going around by the apartments, coming from northbound Grashit onto Clinton River Drive to Meadow. And on Bain, they're parking on both sides of the street. On the other, because it's posted from years prior, they're only parking on one side. Right now, the number of cars is down to about 52, 54 cars. 53, 54 is what it averages. Winter is setting in. Last winter, I had to deal with two to three feet of snow. As the truck would go down, he would swerve out before he got to my driveway to go down the middle of the street, and you have this whole pile of snow from the guy that has a commercial vehicle, which the ordinance says you're not supposed to park commercial vehicles on the street, but, you know, they say he's licensed and whatever, but still. Dealing with the post office, our streets don't get done. They don't get swept. He attempts to sweep, but the cars are there, so he just goes down the middle of the street, and where there's no cars, he'll sweep. The neighborhood and I went and, it was a federal holiday, what we did was go and clean out the curbs and put them in, and I commend Jeff, because we didn't use paper bags, we used plastic bags, because it was after that date, and he in turn came and picked those up. But, you know, it's getting to be a problem. It's getting to be a safety issue, and I understand that it is a public street, but it is not an all-day public parking lot. And something has to be done. Something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We have no illustrative responses, so I need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve the work session of December 17, 2018, and the regular commission meeting of December 17, 2018.
Support.
Campbell.
I'm sorry, RoKaw.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
All right, general business. 9A, public hearing for the allocation of community block grant, CDBG funding for fiscal year 2019. Need a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing for the allocation of community development block grant funding for fiscal year 2019.
Support.
It is expected that the city of Mount Clemens will receive an allocation of $64,834 in CDBG funding for the 2019 fiscal year. The purpose of this agenda item is to elicit public input from residents and nonprofit organizations on how these dollars should be spent within the city. Notice of the public hearing, which is attached, was published in the Macomb Daily, also attached is a list of the nonprofit applications that have been pre-approved by the county.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so you may come forward and address this body.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mark Henderson, and I'm representing, once again, the Macomb County Mormon Center and the Ray Hope Day Center. First, I'd like to thank you for your wonderful support over the past two years by helping us help improve Mount Clemens by helping the homeless. I know we are in our, starting our seventh week, and by the way, our office is based right here in Mount Clemens, actually right next door. I know the Sheriff's Department is very happy that we're there, because they can bring people there who are basically shacking up in store owners, front yards, backyards, residence places and stuff like that. And just to give you a little recap, so far, you might read these one point time head counts, I think last year's number from Macomb County was 42. We've already provided shelter for 298 homeless people in Macomb County, so, and we're only in Week 6. Last year, we reached almost 700. So basically, what that translates into, since we opened up in November, we provided 2,252 shelter nights and about 4,500 meals, okay? On top of that, the shelter is the Band-Aid, it is necessary. There are awful lot of people, if you walk around downtown, anybody with a backpack, they're not a student, they're homeless, even if they don't look homeless. A lot of people are just, a lot of people are in that situation not because it's not because it's their fault. That's what we do at the Ray Hope, we help people bridge their barriers to get them back housed. A lot of senior citizens don't realize that they qualify for senior housing. I can't tell you how many people we've guided in that respect. A lot of people, most of them suffer from some sort of a mental illness, and what we do is we're very hard to connect these people with other organizations who have federal funding to help provide permanent supportive housing for these individuals, and they don't even know it exists. So we're working to do that. This year, we're asking for $3,000. What that money will be used for is, a lot, quite a bit of it is used, I have a policy. When I'm helping somebody job hunt, okay, their biggest complaint is, "Well, how am I gonna get there?" Well, I'll tell them, and I make this promise, I'll give you enough bus tickets to get to your first paycheck, and then we'll go from there to help you if you need it. A lot of people, they get a factor now, they need a pair of steel toe boots, they need some safety glasses. That's what we use that money for, is to help people get off the streets, get back, become taxpayers again. And at this point, I'd like to just wonder if anybody has any questions about the program, about the shelter, or anything like that?
I do.
Yes.
The warming center, now, you use the churches-
Correct.
-through McRus for the housing, am I correct? Or do you have something separate?
Well, McRus is different than us.
I know, I know McRus is different, but-
Right.
-do you have separate warming shelters, or where you send them to?
We're covering 20 weeks through a network of 19 churches.
Okay.
Okay, we rotate every Sunday to a different church.
Okay.
And we're spread it all throughout Macomb County. We have four churches right here in Mount Clemens that host, including your neighbor in Clinton Township, St. Louis Church.
Okay, so you have four churches here.
Right.
So you're really not connected with McRus then, and their warming centers?
We're good friends.
Okay, that's it, okay. Yeah, it's confusing to me, because there's two or three different ones.
Yeah, okay, just to clarify, McRus takes the families, okay, and they do background checks, they do breathalyzers, they do drug tests, they can't take criminal sex offenders, they can't take bank robbers, anything like that, because there's children. That's where the need came, Macomb County actually came to us 18 years ago and asked someone to do this, so we picked up the baton and did it. We take everybody else, we take 18 and over only, we don't do a background check, we don't breathalyze, we don't drug test, however, somebody is, we have trained staff overnight too, that's also a big, a big cost. Couple of them are retired police officers, and they know what to look for. What we do is if somebody is too intoxicated to function, we don't throw them out in the cold, we call EMS, and they're happy, they're happy to come and get them, take them in the hospital, get them detoxed. If somebody is acting so belligerent that they're just being violent, then we call our good friends who work for Sheriff Forteam, you know, and they'll come and put them up for the night. So, we basically, that's why, we could have upwards of 100 people in one night, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I share something?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thanks, Dory.
Good evening, my name is Dory Voskus Nolan, I'm the Executive Director of the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center, also known as CareHouse. Our main location is located in downtown Mount Clemens, and our services are focused on child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, and children that may have been a witness to a violent crime. We work with all law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County. We're one of 37 child advocacy centers accredited in the state of Michigan currently, serving over 50 counties, and one of over 800 in the United States. As I said, we work with all law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County, as well as the FBI, Homeland Security, and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, Children's Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, medical and mental health professionals, and other child welfare agencies in the state, or determined by the case. Over 1 million children in our country suffer from abuse and neglect each year, and child sexual abuse is an epidemic. More children suffer from the trauma of sexual abuse than from asthma and autism combined. Experts agree that the actual number of victims is difficult to determine, and probably much higher than what is reported. At CareHouse, we see over 700 children each year, just from Macomb County, and the cases that we see range from kid-on-kid touching or other sexual contact, the perpetration of sexual abuse on children by adults, serial sex abusers, otherwise known as pedophiles, children who suffer repeated, frequent, and sadistic forms of sexual abuse, physical abuse and torture, sometimes with the knowledge of a parent who is failing to protect them. We also see cases increasingly of child pornography and sex trafficking. Over 90% of child victims do know their abuser, and those who molest children look and act just like everyone else. Abusers can be neighbors, friends, coaches, teachers, clergy, parents, or other family members. It can be adults or children, they can be men or women. The children we serve come from every community in Macomb County, and they were spared the trauma of multiple forensic interviews and provided with the tools they need to help them heal and move forward. After a forensic interview, CareHouse offers follow-up services for the child victims and their non-offending family members, intervening to promote healing and to help the families cope with the emotional stress and trauma that is caused not only by the acts of abuse, but by the investigative process. Our support services include crisis counseling, child safety assessments, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, family advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations, referrals to other needed community services, and as the local counsel in Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, CareHouse also offers child abuse prevention information and training for professionals and for the community at large. Families are never charged for any of the services that they receive at CareHouse, and we will provide services to all referred children. I'm proud to report, according to our last, or most recent, independent financial audit, that 84 cents of every dollar that comes to CareHouse is specifically devoted towards our programs of serving children and families. Now, after conducting interviews in one location for 22 years, I'm really excited to announce that we have opened a second location, a satellite center in the city of Warren. Our new victim and family service center will bring those critical services, including forensic interviews, therapy, and support groups, directly to the large population in the southern part of our county, for whom we had noticed in the past transportation had been a barrier to providing services. Our new satellite office has also freed up space in our schedule in Mount Clemens, which allows us to serve central Macomb County and northern Macomb County much faster. Since our opening, we've conducted over 7,000 child forensic interviews, and 242 of those children were residents of Mount Clemens. In 2017, we conducted 605 forensic interviews, 27 of those children were residents of Mount Clemens, and last year, we conducted 753 forensic interviews, with 31 of those children being residents of Mount Clemens. We do depend on the support of the community to provide a voice for child victims and a safe place for them to be heard. We're very grateful to be your neighbor in Mount Clemens, and we hope that you will consider our request this year in the amount of $6,000 to support services for 10 child victims and their families, who would be residents of Mount Clemens. If anyone's interested in more information on CareHouse, we invite you to follow our Facebook page, or visit our website at www.mccarehouse.org. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions? Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing for the allocation of community development block grant funding for fiscal year 2019.
Support.
RoKaw.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
9B was removed. 9C, request approval of the agreement for the Macomb County Animal Shelter Services. Need a motion?
Move to approve the attached agreement for Macomb County Animal Shelter Services as presented.
Support.
Each year, the county sets fees for animal shelter services provided by the county. The fees are adjusted based upon inflation, and the Michigan Department of Agriculture required holding times for stray pets. The fees are set for the entire county and cannot be negotiated by individual municipalities. The only other option available to a municipality would be to opt out of this contract and provide the services themselves, which the city is currently not equipped to perform. This contract has been reviewed by the city attorney.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, RoKaw.
Crapp.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ford, it should be Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Motion. 9D, approve purchase and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support. Any questions? Commissioner Mensah?
I just wanted to know about the street sweeper parts, and I wondered if the, this cost was from the accident where our street sweeper got rear-ended, and if insurance is eventually gonna pay that back.
That's correct, that's what prompted those costs, was an accident, and the vehicle that hit that, there is cost being through that insurance company.
Okay. Any other? RoKaw.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Consent agenda, there is none. Okay, we'll prove that one. City manager, your report?
The next issue of the Clementine's Newsletter is scheduled for delivery in the Journal Newspaper on January 9, 2019. City offices will be closed on Monday, January 21, 2019, in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Therefore, the next regularly scheduled city commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 22, 2019. Refuge pickup will remain on schedule during the week of January 21. Christmas trees will be collected by the city's refuge contractor on your regularly scheduled refuge pickup day through January 26, 2018. Please make sure the tree is bare and not in a plastic bag when placed at the curb for pickup. And just a reminder that it's time to renew animal licenses, the 2019 dog and cat licenses are available in the treasurer's office. A penalty fee is added to any license renewed after February 28, 2019.
Questions? Okay, it's going to, oh, there aren't any commissioner comments? Commissioner comments? Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell.
The only thing I have is that I was shocked to hear about that dog situation, so something can be done about it, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Crapp.
Ditto what Commissioner Campbell said, hopefully that we can have a solution for Grove Park residents, it sounds like they're being held a bit hostage by the dogs, so hopefully that can be resolved. I also wanted to remind everyone that I have coffee talk dates on January 15 at John's Family Grill, 9:30 AM, it's a Tuesday. If you can't attend that, then we will have an evening coffee talk on 17 at Bath City Bistro, so we're changing it up a little bit for the new year, and hopefully you can join us at one of those dates. Oh, one more thing.
What time?
Oh, sorry, 7:00 PM, thank you. And I also wanted to wish interim city manager, Ms. Borges, a happy birthday.
I'd say too.
Commissioner Bunton. I guess I'll just start with, according to Google, the bizarre and unique holidays for the month of January. January month long is National Blood Donors Month, and that's a good time for people to give. You don't have to pay for that, that's something you can do by just going in and giving blood, and that blood that you give may save lives, so we encourage you to take part in that. National Bath Safety Month. I guess that's specifically to help prevent infant drownings, and that happens a lot, so that's something to consider as well. And then, special days, January 9, the second Wednesday of January, the goal is to encourage us to improve our health by leaving the elevator or the escalator behind and walking up and down the stairs to improve our health. One day is not enough, but it's a beginning, so let's try to do that. January 13, Make Your Dreams Come True Day, a day for you to do something to realize your goals and dreams. This day is the perfect day to do something that will move you closer to making that dream come true, and that's something that should be every day. Take a shot at, your best shot at coming to your goals, doing the things that'll help you get to your goals. And then, January 21, Martin Luther King Day. It's observed the third Monday of January, this day honors the birth of Martin Luther King. He was actually born January 15, and that would be in 1929. He was one of the greatest social activists the world has ever known. At 35, he became the youngest person to win the Nobel Prize, Nobel Peace Prize, thank you. Tonight is a good day for football, the college championship will be decided, and Clemson University versus the University of Alabama, don't know who you're rooting for, but I plan to get there and watch the game. And with that, I'll say, oh, I got one more thing. Commissioner Wisdom, can't leave that out. If you are more fortunate than others around you, it is more honorable that you build a longer table than to build a taller fence. Think about that one, and with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Thank you. I too hope that we can do something about the dog situation. As a walker, it's always very scary when you're walking down the street and a dog comes racing at you, and you hope there's one of those invisible fences there, but if there's not, you know, it's, it's a scary situation, so I hope we can do something about that, or the owners themselves do something about it. I'd also like to know what we can do, or why we can't do anything about the situation on Bain with the post office, people using it as a parking lot for their employee parking. It seems to me that there, that's not what the street is for, and that we have plenty of parking lots around that perhaps we can work something out with, but hopefully we can look into that as well. And with that, I wish everyone a happy new year, hope it's a productive, healthy, happy one, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I too would like to have a, notice situation about Grove Park. I have a sister there, she tells me everything else, but she never mentioned about the dogs. And next, I would like to thank the mayor and Ms. Weiss for the beautiful New Year's Eve fireworks, they were really nice. Too bad for the little kids, they had to stand out in the rain, but 11 o'clock, it was nice outside. That's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah.
So, we had a little interesting Christmas. My, my little man, who's 10 now, he asked me for a Nikon camera. I might have told you guys this, but he asked for a Nikon camera, and I said to him, "What do you want to take pictures of?"
Oh. Everyone. Hi. Hi, I, you want to stay? I mean, attorney.